Slightly after ten oh eight, as our screen says, would everyone please stand to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could everyone please mute their microphones?
There we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Well, Jake, we thank you for getting us up and running. All these new systems are always a treat to try and initiate. You know, I like that. I read patch and Eddie's name, but I don't have to look at him. He just has his name in there.
He'll come on when you got to talk to him.
Oh. He doesn't want us.
He's so want to talk.
Look at all his names. Poor Mike Adams. He's homesick and he's online. Jeez, oh man. All right.
I'm actually fine, but my son, uh...
Ah, okay. How old is your son, Mike? Mike?
Uh, doing all right.
He's doing okay?
Two and a half. He's been, uh, urgent.
Oh, okay. Okay, beautiful. Well, God bless. Okay, start off with approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty-two from Thursday, November fifth, twenty twenty, approval fulfilled.
So move.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, journal entry number one.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. Commissioners, O M B.
Agreement?
Yes.
Commissioner, this is a license agreement with Nick Sartain, W K V N, to mount and operate a wireless I P radio rooftop camera at Oak Hill Renaissance. That gives them a nice kind of a view of the downtown.
It is, yes. Absolutely beautiful.
It is very nice.
It shows our city to the nines.
Mm-hmm. Does. And Carol, um, I hear that, you know, we've got a contract. You're the person who gets up and cleans the lens off before each, before each news showing.
I am.
Is that accurate?
Yes, I am.
Get up there with your Windex?
Yeah, I do. I get up there with my Windex, and I sterilize and keep it nice and clean.
You're the person for the job.
Channel twenty-seven.
All right, thanks, Audrey. Engineers, Patrick.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, this is an agreement with Light Freight Line or Youngstown for repairs in vehicle number fifty-eight in the estimated amount of one thousand one hundred forty-one dollars in places. Uh, this is non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. Ledface.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, here's an agreement with Dr. J Gallagher, uh, for a renewal of our pollution lab billion charge that covers, uh, the county and our working partners. Uh, letter D, it will be with the city of Youngstown, uh, the home investment partnership program. They're giving us seventy thousand home funds to do, uh, two rehabs within the city of Youngstown in conjunction with our land control grant program.
All right, thanks, Bill. Sanitary, the rest is all you, Bill.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Here's an agreement with Central Industrial Service Group. This is to provide services to the various locations where we have cranes. They will come in for the next two years, inspect the cranes, repair the cranes, service cranes, and if necessary, replace those parts that may need to be, um, replaced in order to ensure the proper operation of the cranes. This is a requirement for safety reasons and also operational needs. This is an agreement with Alcon Mechanical. This is a contract to replace valves at the Lockwood Boulevard pumping station in Moreland Township and at the Neander wastewater treatment plant. Here's an agreement with Integrity of Products. This is to provide a dive team that will actually go into the wet well at the Neander wastewater treatment plant and to perform the necessary replacement and work on the pump at the pump station there. The station has to remain live during this process, and that is why there is this need for these divers to actually go down and do the work that is necessary to replace this part. And H is an agreement with Zylund, uh, the watering pollution. This is for rental equipment to allow for the bypass pumping while replacing the valves at that Lockwood Boulevard pumping station.
All right. It's alive. Thank you, Bill. Motion approved agreements.
Motion approved agreements, A through H.
Second. Call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. Appointments, Commissioners, to reappoint the following individuals to serve on Mahoney County Board of Developmental Disabilities for a four-year term beginning January first, twenty twenty. Gary Onesti, Jody Cale, and Anthony Suric. Oh, is Bill up there? Oh, sorry, Bill.
I'm okay. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Um, you know, all three of these individuals, um, are, you know, very great for our, um, Mr. Onesti, I believe this will be starting his third term, you know, appointed term. He came in, uh, partly through the term initially, I believe, in two thousand twelve. Um, Miss Cale, this will be her second, uh, term, and then Mr. Suric had come off the board and is now back on, uh, so it'll be, uh, the term of Charles Holden, and now this will be a reappointment for a four, four-year term. Uh, again, appreciate, uh, you doing great, or remember, they do wonderful things, they have a great passion for what they do and provide a lot of guidance for our organization. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Congratulations, too, on the levy, and it shows what excellent job that you and your staff do, and people recognize it, and the good work in the community, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support. All three of you have always been very supportive of us, and, um, I know that you also help out many people, and then obviously help us get the word out about what we do, and how we help this group along. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, motion approved appointments.
Motion approved appointments, three A.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. All right, road closings. Patrick.
Commissioners, uh, we need to extend the glitter mock road between State Route five thirty-four and Weaver Road until Friday, November twentieth, for cover replacements.
Okay. Is that it, Pat?
Got to take a call.
All right.
Did you not hear me?
Yes, we did. You were.
Okay.
Okay, motion approved, road closings.
Motion approved, road closings, four A.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved, resolutions, number one, agreements.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, O M B. Audrey, you want to take that tomorrow?
Exactly. Uh, Commissioner, this is a resolution to enter into agreement with Genss Town, uh, Warren Regional Chamber to assist small businesses operating in Mahoney County affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, this is using CARES Act funding in the amount of twenty-four thousand, and this is to assist with a program they're doing through the end of year.
Okay.
Item C, uh, Commissioners, this is a resolution to approve additional agreement and expenditure with the following agencies to assist the COVID nineteen public health and funded by CARES Act in the following amounts. Um, the Board of Health, uh, thirty-five thousand eight nineteen. These are going to be dragged as a new contract tracing. They'll be able to give to individuals, um, camel, reading events, reaching out to individuals who have been affected by the, uh, COVID, um, pandemic. Food banks, uh, various, um, food banks within the county, um, being forty thousand for, um, go towards that. Um, and then advertising, um, Commissioners want to establish a advertising campaign, um, giving the slogan of, uh, mascot Mahoney, county or rally or Mahoney. I would redo it. Uh, but that will be coming out.
One of them is not on the room on the side.
That's, that'll be coming out, and, uh, as soon as we go, um, Commissioners will get some designs and stuff. Lou Vega is working on that for the Commissioners. Uh, and then item C is a, uh, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds in the amount of seventy-two thousand eight thirteen from the general fund to the Board of Health. This is to support their initiative to address various disparities in Mahoney, uh, County and to work with a group of individuals to, um, see how to react, react to those disparities.
Nice. Okay. Very, very necessary, you know, um, we're looking for the help, so that'll be a good rule. Uh, sanitary, D, Bill?
Uh, yes, Commissioners, this is two, and that's a resolution previously passed by the Board concerning eminent domain proceedings for requiring easement. An updated appraisal was used for one of the properties, and we needed to adjust the resolution to match the revised amount of the appraisal.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Bill. Motion approved resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, letters A through D.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner, are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell, can I?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes. Thank God, is that all? Is that all there is? If that's all there is, then let's keep dancing. Wasn't that a song? Mike's not, Mike's not here to, to help me out along with the lyrics.
Carol sing and put the spotlight on.
It's not AC/DC, I don't know what it is.
I like all kinds of music. I actually have a lot of, uh, a lot of old stuff. I have a lot of, uh, um, Eddie Armstrong, I have Al Jolson, I have a lot of old music that I like to listen to.
You ever hear Dean Martin, Frank Sinatra?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a tape of Pete Cervone that used to own the manor.
I got it.
Singing all of, uh...
Sounded just like...
Yeah, Dean Martin and Frank Sinatra songs, sang just like...
Pete Cervone.
You know who used to play in his, he played in their band?
The Rocko Monica.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Same with Frank's.
Those are real musicians.
Yeah, those were the old days.
Well, we will go to the good the order for, uh, department heads, elected officials. Anyone have anything they'd like to add?
Hey, can I...
Is everybody turned loose?
Excuse me, uh, did we mention that next week, we're going to move away from the WebEx platform? We'll be on the Zoom platform, so we'll be sending out links to everybody. It'll be a new meeting link, and, uh, we can verify with the county employees that, that use the software. We'll make sure it's installed on the machine, but the general public can also use Zoom. It's obviously...
I know everybody quit probably here, Jake, because he's way back there, and these microphones won't pick up that far.
That'll be fixed next week.
But next, starting next week, the Commissioners will have, um, there's the completion of a Zoom room set up in their hearing room, and so they will be going to the Zoom platform. Um, there will be new access codes and links, and, um...
Easier to access.
We get through, we get past all of this other stuff, so this is great, and, um, this is also funded through the CARES Act, um, funding for social distancing and remote work. Um, this allows the directors to be in their offices and, uh, still meet with the Commissioners. Go for these two.
Okay, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment or give us some insight? Anyone? Pat, Lou, anybody? Is everybody open?
Yeah. Um, they can un, I will unmute you. They all have the ability to unmute themselves.
Okay, uh, everybody's going to be unmuted, so if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. Anyone have any comments, anything you'd like to say?
Hold on a minute, because when I mute, Nancy, mute yourself back when I mute you.
So you don't need to do that anymore.
Okay.
With your Zoom.
Yeah, they all have their selves muted.
Okay, can, does anyone have any comments? Is that Dwayne up there?
Right.
Dwayne, anything? No? Dwayne, can you hear me? Wait.
Dwayne?
Can you hear me, Dwayne? So do you have it? Everybody unmuted?
Dwayne, do you have anything?
He muted. I didn't unmute myself, so...
Now, can, Dwayne, can you hear me? Dwayne, wave to me if you can hear me.
He muted himself. Okay, he muted.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anyone?
We can, we can hear you, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
See if Kathy has any updates.
Kathy, anything you'd like to, uh, listen on, the Sheriff's Department?
Where is Kathy?
Right in the middle.
No, sir, what's he doing here, Sheriff? Do you know, man? No, we're good.
All right. Okay, uh, not being said, any questions? Anyone, uh, out there from the public that would like to ask any questions? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I go to inside. Carol?
Well, I want to thank everyone. This is going to be a great, next week when we get it all done. It's taken not as long as it normally would take, and you guys are doing very well at trying to get us updated, and it's, it's amazing what automation will do, so I want to thank you for that. It'll be nice to look ahead instead of turn. It will be very nice. Everybody will see everyone. Um, as, as Dave went to, uh, Fernando's Wedgwood Pizza's birthday, and he'll talk about that for us, because Anthony and I were like running around all over the other place doing things. We had to split up. I have, I have to say this, a friend of mine called me last night, um, uh, from the beauty shop, and there was a woman, Anna Switney, who is a hundred year old, hundred years old today, actually, and, um, uh, we send happy birthdays to her, and this little woman was like phenomenal. Every time she'd see you in the beauty shop, she had this big smile, she'd bring treats. I mean, um, what a great person, so I want to publicly wish her a happy birthday from all three of us. And my neighbor, Emmanuel Cominos, who is ninety years old, last week, uh, his, his daughter and her husband and the grandkids were all at the house, and we had a drive-through in the neighborhood. They had a drive-through for his ninetieth. So God bless him, too. What a guy. I mean, he's, he's a great neighbor, and you would never know this man was ninety, and I think, Jimmy, you know who he is. You'd never know that. He's always doing something. God bless him. And so I'll get to my, my average every day, every week subject. If everyone listened to Governor Dewine yesterday at five-thirty, the COVID pandemic is on a rise. Why is that? I would say probably because more testing, more people are getting more positive results from the test. Um, I think people are just not wearing the mask like they should, they're not self-distancing, and we all have to do this. We have to wear our masks, we have to self-distance. The holidays are coming, we have to be very cautious on what we do. I mean, big parties, big family events, big weddings, big anniversaries or birthdays, that, that should be up. At least give yourself three months of just trying to be in your own home, masked. If you have to go to work, go to work. Um, there are things that are going to have to be taken into consideration again. The governor's going to give us another update next week, but I'm begging everybody, wear your mask. It's, you have no clue what this illness can do to your body. You have no clue. Unless you know all about it and have experienced it, you don't have a clue, so please protect yourself, protect your neighbors in your family and your children. Thank you, Dave and Anthony. I know I'm on a soapbox with this, but I just can't, I mean, of anybody, I'm home all the, at night, I come to work, go to the store, go home. It's like, you want to like kill because that's what you're doing anymore, but you have to just find house projects, you know, go in the park, run, walk, self-distance. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
All right.
Now, I know Carol's, uh, passion, you know, it's not too much to ask to wear a mask, but a few, a few things I want to say is, I too want to wish Fernando a happy ninetieth birthday. Me and Carol weren't able to attend, but, you know, when you talk about Fernando and Wedgwood Pizza, you talk about an individual that's basically embodies the American dream, an immigrant coming from Italy over here and, uh, became so successful. So that's something I, I would like to say to him. Uh, he makes me proud. Uh, as an Italian-American, he makes everybody proud, and he's not a bad role model to try to follow, uh, on his success. So Dave, I appreciate you going there and, uh, doing that for the Commissioners. Also, you know, Ball, Ohio, where I'm from, we have a, uh, a superstar there. Uh, her name is, uh, Julia Cooper, and I want to, and I want to congratulate her...
Yes, she did.
...on making round two. Um, she was given a lifeline, uh, by one of the judges because she performed so well in a duet, uh, doing a song, uh, Summer's Soft by Stevie Wonder.
Right.
So she did such a fantastic job, the judge, Judge Legend, gave her a pass to continue. So there was a big parade, uh, in Poland with the buses and the fire trucks and everything on her, so to her family, I want to congratulate her and continue, please, Julia, uh, on your success.
She's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Wow.
And yesterday was Veterans Day, and I just wanted to thank all of our veterans who were both here with us and who have passed for their service. Um, Laying of the Roses was this past Sunday, very somber, but beautiful event, you know, laying the roses in front of that monument. Uh, Jimmy, you know, you've been there forever. It's, it's emotional, very emotional, and we all attended yesterday at the courthouse, uh, the veterans ceremony there by the United Veterans Council and the Austintown Choir. Those kids knocked it out of park, uh, with their songs and everything, so it was very, very nice, uh, that we were able to do that for our veterans. So happy Veterans Day, uh, to all of our veterans and for their sacrifice. And lastly, tomorrow is the release of AC/DC's new album. They haven't had any music out in eight years. It's called Power Up. Make sure you buy it. I've heard three songs already, and it rocks. It sounds almost like Back in Black. Thank you.
Who's singing on it?
Brian Johnson, Richard Whitehead.
Really?
Yep. Minus Malcolm Young, who died, who was Angus Young's brother. Uh, so...
I thought the one guy lost his, I thought the one guy lost his hearing.
He did, but he's back. Somehow, that was Brian Johnson. Yeah. He sounds great. Oh, my Lord. He's just great.
And who's that dude in the shorts that bounces around, man? That wears those...
Angus Young.
That's Angus Young.
Yeah. Nobody can touch him. Nobody can touch him.
He cracks me up. I love that. He wears those like Crush of Lore shorts and bounces out.
Schoolboy outfit.
Yeah. That is, that is so cool.
Got to check it out. Great music. But save twenty-twenty. I think AC/DC should be credited. With saving twenty-twenty, we could close a bad year out on a good note, so thank God their album came out.
But the bad thing is, is can you even buy an album today? Can you buy, can I buy a CD? They don't even, they don't even put CDs in the cars anymore.
No.
I mean...
I know.
In my garage...
You have a download...
I have a Nakamichi or something, uh, turntable, or not turntable, but cassette player, and I've got like four hundred cassettes, and I play them in my garage when I'm working on, in my cars, I have all CDs, because my cars all have CD players.
You said you had an eight-track.
Well, I have an eight-track in my Camaro. See, I have my old car. I have an eight-track in my old Camaro, a sixty-nine Camaro, and, and I've got one inside. So, but yeah, anyway, so can I go buy a, online and buy a CD?
There's a, a disc album that they have out, it's called Power Up, and it lights up, and I pre-ordered it a month ago, and all the music is in there, and there's a download app for it. You want to run it through your car, through a U, U B port or whatever, and there's a disc in there. It's like thirty-nine bucks, the best deal to get, so you can see it on, on, you got to get it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I won't do that.
All right, I too wanted to, uh, say happy birthday to Phil, to Fernando. Fernando's daughter's Philamina, and she's the one that put it all together. Um, what a nice event. Fernando turned ninety. He was behind the pizza counter, and, and, I mean, basically, his whole family works there. I mean, he has such a great family, his, you know, his daughter and his, you know, grandkids and just everybody is, is so cool, that, uh, you know, they had a little box with, uh, two or three slices of pizza, a bag of chips, a bottle of pop, and a cookie that said, "Happy Birthday Fernando" on it, and they, every, anyone that came through the door from noon till three, they gave them away, and at three o'clock, they went back to, you know, selling pizzas. Fernando, like, like Anthony said, you know, talking about the American dream, Fernando, for like five years in a row, was crowned the single largest volume individual pizza shop in sales in the United States. They sold over five thousand pizzas a day out of that one location in Wedgwood and Austintown, and, you know, so he's gotten so many awards on, you know, his pizza. I mean, the things that he created there, and, and I'm, I'm really a pizza connoisseur. I worked at Cornersburg Pizza for over ten years, you know, when I was fourteen years old on, and, uh, my mother took me to work in Cornersburg and dropped me off and said, "Go cut pizzas for Mr. and Mrs. Lou." You know, I think I was fifteen, but anyway, Fernando put pineapple and bacon on pizzas and things that you would never even imagine would taste good, and, and my mother, she would love pineapple and bacon on pizzas, and, and it was, it, it's really something good, and I seen a quote, she asked me that, you know, so...
That's my favorite, Dave, nothing else.
Is it really?
It is. That's all I ordered from him.
And my mother loved that, and, and isn't it apropos that all of these little, little containers that they passed out yesterday for you to take home? They were random pizzas and everything, you know, so they made tons of everything to give away, and I, they gave me one when I walked out the door, and when I left, I got home and opened it, and it was bacon and pineapple, you know, so I figured it was, it was just, it was a meaning that was for my mom, you know, so that, it was really a great event, you know, and, um, we, we presented Fernando with a diamond on behalf of the Commissioners and the County, and, and Austintown gave him key to the city, and, you know, and it was just really heartwarming, because Fernando has done, quick story, that when we were, we used to, they have a, a, a conference room in the back, and we would always have our meetings there, whether it was the Austintown Growth Foundation, the Austintown School Board, or the Democratic Party, or whatever it was there. Well, Fernando always provides pizza for every meeting, for everybody to eat free of charge, and so he would always come in and sit in on some of the meetings, the Austintown Growth Foundation. Well, I was president of the Growth Foundation for a while, and, and we were going to, we were going to raise money to buy new curtains for the stage in the high school, and we, we, when we, when we got the, the price tag, it was culture shock, because they were over twenty thousand dollars to buy the drapes on the stage, and so we committed to buying them, and then we had to raise enough money to make the payment every year on it, because we didn't have twenty grand, and after about five meetings through, you know, we never really did get confirmation of who, but when we showed up, we had a letter back that came back to the treasurer and said that the loan had been paid off in full. And, you know, so we all knew that it was Fernando, but he never fessed up to it, you You know, and that's just kinda the person he was. If there was somebody that needed something, you know, when he was a grand marshal of the parade in Austintown, he threw out gift cards to get free pizza, you know, when he was, instead of camping, you know? And, I mean, just so giving and so, you know, just somebody that appreciates the opportunities he, he has had as an immigrant coming into the United States and, and being able to give.
He went to St. Anthony's Church.
Oh, did he? Um, Veterans Day yesterday, you know, always just amazing. You know, I miss going into the veterans' ceremony at the high school in Austintown because that choir is so amazing. And they would sing all of the fight songs of each, of, of each of the armed forces. Each of the branches of the armed forces. I don't know if you really call them fight songs, but, you know, you know what I mean? The, the Marine songs, the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, and Coast Guard. And when they would do it, all the veterans that were in attendance, you know, from every war would stand when they played the Marine song or when they played the Navy. And if, if it didn't bring tears to your eyes, where you were standing there looking around and seeing the veterans. I mean, veterans that are from World War II that could barely walk, you know, show up to honor the other veterans. You know, and, and it's just an amazing thing. We need to honor them on a daily basis. You know, people like Jim and Bob Bush and, and people that, not to leave anyone out, maybe a veteran in the room. But it's always something that's, that's very, very touching and, and very deserving, so. And, and really, Mike Ruley gave, yesterday morning at Veterans Day, he gave a, a talk, you know? And, and, you know, and it seemed like he just spoke from the heart. He had nothing written down. He had no speech. He had, he just stood there and talked about, you know, one of the, the ladies in his office that got Memorial Day mixed up from Veterans Day. And he just talked about the difference and how we honor those who have fallen. And to, yesterday, we honored those who served, you know, and, and have served. And, and it was, he did an amazing job. I was very, I was very honored to, to listen to his speech. And it's, it's difficult to hear people speak. And I know Anthony's done it many times and has done a great job, that aren't veterans, but are able to relate, you know, and, and connect you with the things that, that happen. You know, so like Anthony's done in the past, Mike Ruley did a great job. And Julia Cooper, my wife and I, you know, her, her sister calls her up all the time. "Are you watching The Bachelor, The Bachelorette?" No, we watch The Voice. We don't watch that. We watch The Voice. So we always watch The Voice.
She was phenomenal.
And she, she sang a couple of times and, and it was just amazing. And then, and her being on John Legend's team, and then that other individual that, that he picked, he was just amazing.
All amazing.
You know, to, to pit him, her against him was, was, I, I thought, oh, man, she's in a losing battle here. You know, and, but then he saved her from his own team. And, and to be on John Legend's team, you talk about a class act. I mean, that guy is amazing.
The highest ranking judge in the country.
Really. I, I mean, you watch him and you watch him do, uh, the, when he, we, my wife and I watched it. Jesus Christ Superstar with him star, uh, starring in it. And just what a phenomenal job that he did.
He's just got a, he's just like humble.
You wanna be his friend.
Yeah.
You know, whenever you see him, you wanna say, "I wanna hang out with that guy."
Yeah, he's humble.
He is.
He is very humble.
He was, he was amazing. Last but not least, well, we, you know, continue to see, and God bless all the people that, that have, uh, a place in their heart for wildlife. You know, that, that have gone and over to Woodside's Lake in Austintown and tried to save fish and clams and turtles and, you know, and, and, I mean, I probably spent five or six days there and going back and forth. But not to the point where the people that were there, I mean, people from all over the county and the state and in waiters up to here in mud. Honest to God, I mean, I, I fell in that mud when I was nine years old and got drug out of it, you know? When the dam broke in the sixties. And, and I know what it's like to get down inside there and not be able to get out. So, I, I mean, it, we got pallets of wood and pallets themselves. And, uh, Home Depot, Lowe's donated stuff. The road department in Austintown, park department in Austintown delivered it. You know, they would throw the pallet down into the mud and then plywood on top of it and try to make, um, stairways that go out to where the water was. Because you couldn't get to the water that was left. And, and the water is probably only about as big as this room. And it's probably only six to eight inches deep. And there's mostly carp left. And they're, they're, they're two feet long. And they're dying in there now because there's not enough water to cover them. And them flipping around so vehemently, they're stirring the mud up. There's no oxygen in the water for them to continue breathing. You know, so, um, so I got a call last night and the turtle that we've been tracking there is about two feet in diameter and we estimate forty, forty years old. And from the different scales that we were able to look at. And, uh, it was, it was good and bad because we knew where the turtle was, but so did people who wanted to eat it. Knew where it was. So, oh, yeah, there were people there that wanted the turtle because they wanted to eat it, you know? I mean, it's, and, and, you know, God bless the, getting the fish and stuff out.
McDonald's down the street.
You know, you don't want them dying. I mean, it's just like, I mean, I don't hunt and, you know, I don't, you know, I don't do those things myself. But, but it's necessary. You know, I mean, you need to thin out the, the deer population, different things. You know, if people are catching fish and they're eating them, that's a great thing. But to see them sit and die, you know, and suffocate, you know, because they're flipping around is terrible. But I got a call last night, um, before dark and said, "We got the turtle." Matt Ditchy, our old dog warden in Mahoney County, and a young lady named Abby. Abby has a four-month-old baby. She's been on maternity leave. And she's a banker. And she just went back to work Monday. And Abby was in the mud up over her waist. And she went out and she had a net. And they were waiting for the turtle because the turtle would go down into the mud. And it would, it would get underneath the mud. You couldn't figure out where it was. Well, the mud's starting to dry up now, so the turtle can't get down his teeth. And she got out there and here's a two-foot snapping turtle. She got the net over it and got the rim pulled underneath it so that it was trapped in the net. And her and Matt Ditchy got it out and got it in one of these big containers. So they called me and said, you know, "We're waiting to take it somewhere, cause we don't want someone to follow us." You know, because we think there's, the people are here that wanna eat it. So, it was, it was, it was kinda funny, but not, you know, but.
The people that live around?
Oh, I don't know where they're from. And, um, but anyway, they called me and, and I said, "I got a place for them." So, um, they came to my house and they had, you know, like two big containers of, of fish. And they had the turtle. And I took a little video of it. Turtle was, was pretty cool, but it's covered in mud. And, uh, you know, I, I, I won't say where we put it, but we drove down Lipkey. And, uh, you know, and off the side of the road and climbed over the fence. You know, and I'm, I'm saying to Matt, he goes, "Look," and he points and it, and it has a big sign on the fence that says, "Video surveillance in progress." And I said, "Okay, well, I guess I shouldn't have worn my sweatshirt that said Ditzler for this on it." You know, and, uh, so we, we, you know, squeezed through and, and went down to the creek there that goes out into the water. And, uh, I think that that was probably the happiest snapping turtle I ever saw. You know, he finally, he got loose and off he went. You know, I mean, he, he shot off like a bullet.
That was nice, Dave. I'll give you a applause.
Hey, and I, and I said, I said to those two, "I didn't do anything but supply the COVID location," you know? And I'm not that kind of COVID, you know? And, uh,
Covert.
Covert.
Covert location.
Yeah, covert location. And, uh, so.
T-shirt on.
And anyway, so many people helped and, you know, it's just always heartwarming.
Is that like just a mud hole now or what? Oh, my God, those residents over there have to be living.
Well, we had a meeting Saturday afternoon at two o'clock in the church, the residents. And the residents are trying to get ownership to be able to rebuild the dam. So, I mean, there's a lot of things in the works. And, and quite honestly, you know, we were sitting there and thirty thousand people looked at the video I showed on there relating to being connected with Woodside Lake, you know, as a kid or growing up or fishing there, ice skating there like the rest of us, like I did. And, you know, and they, I think they started a GoFundMe page. You know, if, just the people looked at the videos, gave ten bucks, there'd be enough. Each gave ten bucks. That'd pay for the dam.
Yeah, we actually ice skated there.
Yeah.
Cause my dad knew the judge.
We played hockey there. We would, we would have a barrel on the side and build a fire. We'd bring our snow shovels. We'd shovel all the ice off and we'd skate there all the time. You know, we ice skated there, you know, growing up every day. You know, it was always a good thing. Anyway, um, thank you to so many different people, veterans. Happy birthday, Philomena, Woodside's Lake, and my colleagues for all the great work that they do.
Okay.
All right, with that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I thought you were saying, uh,
Commissioner, can I take a hand?
Yes.
Yes. Next meeting?
Next meeting. Where are we at, Nancy?
Thursday to nineteen.